Get started. Apologize for starting a few minutes late. This is a regular meeting of the City Council. Today is Monday, June 23rd. I'll request the City Clerk to call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yarenz Galadia's absence. Mayor Kate.
Present for investor here this evening. We met in closed session and I invite the City Attorney to report out on that item.
Good evening. No reportable action was taken in closed session this evening.
Thank you. So, good evening everyone and welcome. Whether you're here in person or tuning in from home, thank you for being a part of tonight's meeting. I want to begin by recognizing the incredible work of our city staff. These are the people who keep San Rafael running day in and day out. Often behind the scenes, often juggling more than one urgent issue at a time. Thank you. Their dedication to serving this community never ceases to impress me or amaze me. And I know I speak for the entire council when I say how grateful we are to all of you. And in fact, we had our employee luncheon, which I think the City Manager will report out on recently, to truly highlight all the great work. So for my comments tonight, I also want to acknowledge the many difficult and terrible events in our nation and our world. But the one I want to focus on is the tragic killing of Minnesota State Representative Melissa Hortman and her husband, and the shooting of Senator John Hoffman and his wife. This act of political violence is heartbreaking and a stark reminder that violence of any kind has no place in our communities, in our politics, and should not and never be normalized. Public service is about listening, problem solving, and working together, even when we disagree. That work becomes impossible when fear or violence enters the conversation. As elected officials, we may hold different views, but we share a common commitment to serving the public and upholding our democracy. As you may know, San Rafael is deeply involved in the local gun safety collaborative, and June is National Gun Violence Month. So locally, we will continue to do the violence prevention work here in our community, as well as to continue to engage deeply with our community, as together we are stronger. Lastly, I include a land acknowledgement. This statement is in addition to the work that we do with the tribe on a regular basis. We thank the original caretakers of this land. San Rafael is traditionally home to the Cozmiwok people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Rancheria, and we honor their continuing involvement in stewardship practices that benefit us all. Thank you for being here. I'll now turn to the City Clerk, who can describe how people can participate in tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube for members of the public wishing to provide public comment. Displayed on the podium and the projector is a timer to help you stay within your two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you live in, or if you're from outside of San Rafael. Viewers may request a reasonable accommodation to provide public comment virtually. For more information about that, or if you experience any technical difficulties, you can contact me at city.clerk@cityofsanarafal.org. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn to the City Manager for the City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a few announcements today. July is Parks and Rec Month, and this year the theme is Build Together, Play Together, which celebrates our city staff and community volunteers. I just wanted to call out and especially thank our park and recreation team for their dedication to creating safe and welcoming spaces that bring people together and enhance the health and well-being of our community. It's also Fourth of July around the corner, so we have... I just wanted to make an announcement about illegal fireworks and remind everybody that to please do report any illegal fireworks. We really want to keep people safe, and tragically there are accidents that happen. We really want to prevent that. And we have safe fireworks, thanks to the County of Marin and the fair that's coming up, July 2nd through the 6th. There are nightly fireworks at the lagoon from July the 2nd to the 6th that start at 9:30. A few more summer events. We've got the downtown summer farmer's market, July 11th, this Friday, no, next Friday, from 5:00 to 9:00 between Luton's Place and A Street. And then that also coincides with Friday night, Second Art Walk, which is from 5:00 to 8:00 along Fourth Street. There's a new event this year called San Rafael Festival of Arts, which is on Saturday, July 26th, from 11:00 to 6:00 up at the Falkirk Mansion. There'll be arts and crafts, live entertainment, food. The event is free, but they're doing a beer and wine tasting. That's about, costs about $30. So there's a specific website for more information. It's sanarafalfestivalofhearts.com. City Hall summer hours and the City Council meetings for this summer. I just wanted to remind everyone that the City Hall will be physically closed every Friday this summer to support staff productivity. You will be able to make appointments for services. You just have to call 415-485-3070, and we can make arrangements to meet with folks virtually or by appointment. And then, as we've done over the last few years, there's a summer recess where the two regularly scheduled meetings, council meetings, will not occur. So we will not have a council meeting on July the 7th or August the 4th. We will have the second meetings in both July and August will occur, as they're typically scheduled on July 21st and August 18th. And then, of course, we will be, other than non-emergency services, closed in observance of July 4th holiday. That's all I've got for you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Couple of updates. I attended the Board Meeting of the Central Marine Sanitation Agency, dealt with routine matters, and adopted our final budget for the upcoming fiscal year. In a similar vein, I attended the San Rafael Sanitation Board Meeting, where I was pleased to substitute for the mayor in leading that meeting. We also adopted our budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Related to that, I would note that we also discussed the process that we're going through to consolidate some of our operations with CMSA. I noticed in the IJ that the Sausalito's doing a very, did a similar undertaking of consolidation. It took them 10 years. We are on a track to do it in a lot less than that, hopefully closer to two years. But, so, we're doing well at San Rafael Sam. And finally, I attended my regular monthly meeting with the Montecito Area Residents Association.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you. I just have two items to report. I attended the Marin Latinos Luncheon. Thank you, Craig Vermei from Parks and Library for presenting all the work that's happening in the canal at Pickleweed. Very, very well received. And I also attended A-BAG, Association of Bay Area Governance. I filled in, I believe, for...
Vice Mayor.
Yes. Councilmember Bushy. Thank you. And we passed the budget for '25-'26. That's part of that.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I have two items to report out. I attended the Employee Luncheon on Wednesday, January... Sorry, June? Yes. J. June 4th. We're in June. That was wonderful. We re-celebrated the employee of the quarter, Hector Carlos, and the team of the quarter, the police field training officers. So it was great to celebrate them again. And we had a great shot that Thomas arranged for us from one of the city drones. Hopefully that turned out well. I think I saw a clip of that. And then, last Wednesday, June 11th, met with Mayor Kate at the Economic Development Subcommittee, where some of the items are actually, one of the items is on the agenda this evening. And that's my report.
Thank you. Other ones have already been mentioned, but I will add I participate in the Transportation Authority of Marin, otherwise known as TAM. I'm on their Measure AA Expenditure Ad-Hoc Committee. We'll be bringing the expenditure plan to the full board this Thursday, so you can tune in or show up if you want to learn more. And then, I was honored to speak at the Federation of Neighborhoods Summer Meeting. And they had many good questions having to do with all the issues that we grapple with up here in the dais and in the community. So, thank you all, as always, for what you do out in the community. I would welcome any public comment on the reports that you just heard. If you'd like to comment, now is your opportunity. I'm going to close the public comment, not seeing any, and move to the consent agenda. Are there any items that a council would like to hold from the consent agenda? To the right, looking to the left. Okay, I'll open up public comment on the consent agenda. Items 4A through 4I, if you'd like to comment. Now is your opportunity. Okay, not seeing anyone. I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back for a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Seconded. Moved seconded. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 4-0. The first item we have as part of our business meeting is a special presentation. We do accept public comment prior to the presentation, and it's a presentation of proclamation and recognition of Louise Yost. So if you'd like to comment on this item, we would welcome any comments at this time. Okay, and we're going to go ahead and present it if the council would join me. Louise, would you like to join me up here? Nothing like bragging about someone as they're standing next to you. Come on up. So this is a proclamation for Louise Yost. Whereas Louise has served on the Pickleweed Advisory Committee for the City of San Rafael for 23 years, from 2002 to 2025. And whereas prior to your appointment, Louise has been a community advocate and attended public gatherings and meetings to support all members of the canal community with a special focus on environmental and social issues. And whereas Louise's involvement has greatly shaped the development and effectiveness of the Albert J. Borrell Community Center in Pickleweed Park and the programming offered within. And whereas Louise, as a resident and supporter of the canal community, has welcomed attendees to the annual Días de las Muertos celebration by playing the steel pans in the community center lobby. And she's awesome, by the way. Highly recommend coming and hearing her this year. Whereas Louise has served the City of San Rafael with both passion and compassion, making certain along the way that each solution advanced and improved the quality of life in San Rafael. And I'll just add, I think we've known each other for well over a decade. And your truly authentic way of showing up around the issues that are important to you and to our community has been incredible and been important to advancing the values and issues in our community. That's why we see that and we honor you tonight. So therefore, I, Kate Collin, Mayor of San Rafael, on behalf of the council and the community, to hereby proclaim our sincere appreciation to Louise Yost for your important contributions and community service to the City of San Rafael. Return. Would you like, would you like to say a few words?
I, of course, I was so surprised when Steve told me about this, and I'm deeply honored, very touched. I almost want to cry. But being able to give back means a lot to me. And being on the Pickleweed Advisory Board/Committee was one way to do that. I learned so much from being on it, from community members, from my board members, from Steve, and before him, David Donneri. One of the, not founding members of the Pickleweed Advisory Board, but one of them was Dorothy Vasecki. I just want to bring her up because she, I looked up to her when I first joined in 2003. She was the board chair, and she ruled with a kind yet strong heart. And she received a Citizen of the Year Award many years ago. So, anyway, I owe her, too. Thank you, and I will take this with me inside. Thank you.
Congratulations Louise. The next agenda item is a Public Art Program Implementation Agreement. And I see that Stacy and Director Henkel have joined us, welcome.
Before we begin this item, I need to disqualify myself of participation as one of the sites is within 500 feet of my residence, which under California law, Political Reform Act prevents me from participating. So I'll be excusing myself and will return for the remaining items.
Thank you.
Great, good evening, Mayor Kate and councilmembers. Mike Abel, Community Economic Development. I don't have a bunch of them over, you actually want to turn it over to Stacy Laumann. Stacy's been kind of the, the city's project and program lead for this for, for a few years now. The amount of work she's put into this has been tremendous. So with that, I'd like her to outline all the good work that we've been doing, so thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Kate and councilmembers. My name is Stacy Laumann. I'm the Economic Development Program Manager here for the City of San Rafael. I have a brief presentation and I'd like to present to you staff's recommendation to adopt a resolution authorizing a contract with a creative firm called Local Edition to implement a new public art program in downtown San Rafael. Thanks. So in, in 2017, the city was honored with a designation by the California Arts Council as one of 14 cultural arts districts in the state of California. In 2023, the city, as part of that designation, received a grant in the amount of $671,000 to implement a cultural district in our city. And at that time, the city applied for that grant in collaboration with five arts organizations that are listed here on the screen, including Youth and Arts, the Downtown San Rafael Business Improvement District, the Marin Society of Artists, California Film Institute, and Artworks Downtown. In 2024, we were fortunate enough to receive an augment to that wonderful grant. So our current grant total from the California Arts Commission is $709,890. The stakeholders, along with staff here at the City of San Rafael, have been working on the Downtown San Rafael Arts District to establish a framework, a strategic plan, and, and a mission. And the mission is to endeavor to provide access to world-class arts and culture and educational experiences for everyone in San Rafael and value serving all members of the community. The strategic plan that the D-SRAD, as we could call them, Downtown San Rafael Arts District, created includes a plan for expanding grant funds and also outreach to all parts of the community. Some of the arts and activities that the D-SRAD have to date completed are a new mural at the Artworks Downtown Building, which you're seeing here on the screen. The group has also funded arts activities like the Dia de las Muertos altars that you might see downtown in relation to the festival each Jan, or each November, and also Mill Valley Film Festival, murals at local schools, and downtown arts programming, like the recent C Street Celebration that Youth and Arts puts on. As part of that strategic plan, the D-SRAD thought to do something a bit more permanent and visually impactful to cement the San Rafael and Marin communities' vision of San Rafael as a major arts hub for the county. So the goal of the Public Art Program as conceived to date is to support economic development through creative placemaking, enhance awareness of San Rafael as that arts hub, and engage stakeholders and really draw attention and people to our downtown area. In January 2025, the Downtown San Rafael Arts District issued a request for proposals through a competitive process in order to implement this type of program. And Local Edition Creative was selected out of nine very qualified applicants. And so Local Edition is one creative firm that we've selected to implement the program, which includes the installation of permanent and temporary art on five city locations. The budget for this is $250,000, including $50,000 of project management and $200,000 in arts programming. Project management and including artist call, public call for artists, engagement, implementation, everything that goes into the site preparation and community communications and completion of the project. Staff worked with arts organizations and also with Local Edition to identify five suitable locations on city property. They're listed here. They're all located within the Downtown Precise Plan area, which is the geographic area that we are using to implement the Downtown San Rafael Arts District grant. And the artworks will include murals, mosaics, and sculpture. As I mentioned previously, the Public Art Program budget is a total of $250,000, with $50,000 of that going to project management and about $200,000 going into the creation and funding of art itself. That represents about 32% of the total Downtown San Rafael Arts District grant that was received from the California Arts Council. This slide shows a timeline for the Public Art Program. Our call for artists happened in, will happen in June 2025, pending the council's approval of this program. Following that, finalists of artists would be selected by the Downtown San Rafael Arts District. We would select a couple different finalists for each location and then we would have a public outreach to gain input on some conceptual designs those artists create. And consistent with our Public Art Review Board process, the final artworks would be presented to the Public Art Review Board for review and recommendation to City Council. City Council would have the opportunity to review the final art proposals and final locations and approve each of those artworks individually. And then, implementation and installation of those artworks would happen from spring through summer 2026. And that concludes my presentation. Again, our recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the city manager to enter into a contract with Local Edition Creative to implement a new public art program downtown.
Thank you Stacy, I'll see if there are any questions, Vice Mayor, any questions? Councilmember Kurtz.
Just one question around the artist, I, I, oh, can you go back to that timeline? Sorry. It's right there. The public input part is the one that I was, that's where in the report you talked about, it mentions the digital surveys. Is that that piece?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Can you talk to that a little bit more? And then the other question around that is the artists that are considered, are they, it's open directly regionally? Or is it, are we prioritizing Marin artists? Or is there any thought around that?
Thank you. So I'll answer your second question first. Our idea is to prioritize local artists with an eye also to having regional or nationally recognized artists if those artworks fit the set and setting and they also sort of create a cohesive story together. So I think one great opportunity here is to make a call for artists, see what comes back, and then, and make a compilation of artworks that do fit together.
Through, through the mayor, if you have like these specific questions on approach, Local Edition Representatives are here, they may be better suited to answer kind of their process. They've implemented this program in multiple Bay Area communities and that was really one of the factors why we, I think they were regarded so high in the selection process is their ability to implement. These can be challenging programs, as we know, so having their expertise and background really has help. But maybe would defer to them if they'd like to come and just speak to that particular question.
That would be fantastic. Hi, Local Edition Marketing, would you like to come down and say a few things? Councilmember Kurtz, do you have any follow-up questions while there?
Is, I do have one more, is if the windows, like empty storefront windows are considered as part of one of the potential areas to be able to use as art?
While Local Edition's coming up, I'll say that this, this particular program and budget is designed for larger and temporary, but like two to three-year pieces on public property owners only. So that could be a separate program that D-SRAD could tackle.
Welcome, I saw you in the room and I, it's nice you came to the Economic Development Subcommittee and I thought if you just wanted to say a few words to enhance what the staff has already said.
Thank you very much. I'll answer a question about the call. This is Sage, and this is Terry, Local Edition Creative, with the founders. We have a small, elite team that we've been working with for 10 years. And as was mentioned, we've worked with multiple cities, a lot of big companies like Kaiser. So we do have a lot of experience with this. And the reason we're called Local Edition is because we, wherever we are, we prioritize that community as our own. So we think of it like that. And so for curation, we do look, we're looking at more of a California call because we want to pull in a lot of different options. And if somebody's fits what we are looking for, we do concentric circles. San Rafael, Marin County, out and out, out. But we also want to get this a very diverse body of artwork. So if there's a lot of artwork by local artists, we definitely want to bring in artists from other parts of the Bay Area or the state. And that really is actually good marketing as well. And it really gets a better world-class body of artwork that was adjusted. What was your other question?
I think it was answered, it had to do with the windows. If that was considered part of it or, so the public art process, review process and the chamber or BID or wherever that came through the last time, that's still going to be going on in parallel.
Yes, that's still an active program. And if you recall, we did that window installation at the pop-up library right next door. I think that's available to really anybody who has those vacant storefronts, but obviously we're also gold of filling those vacant storefronts with active businesses. So that's really the priority. But I do believe the permitted installs, along with the rotating art that Local Edition has scoped out, I think is really the next move for us. Particularly about the grant implementation, you know, this grant does actually have a horizon. So we are actually on track to actually meet some of the grant requirements, so.
Great, appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, and I'd like to add one last thing.
Yeah, please do.
We typically actually don't go through an RFP process with cities, we're actually just hired directly. We were so excited about working here that we went through that process. So it really is a big deal for us and that's how much we thought about the opportunity and importance of working here. So we, this is something that's very rare and we're really honored and excited that we were selected. So we look forward to seeing you all over the course of the next year.
Thank you Sage. Terry, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, no.
Okay.
I mean, he's, he answered it all, but I think I'm very happy to see you.
Well, if any questions come up, we might ask you to answer them, but thank you. Thank you for coming on up. So not seeing any other questions from the council at this point, I'll open it up to public comment on this item. See if any input you want to provide or additional questions, now would be your opportunity. And we welcome, but you're not required to say your name and what part of San Rafael you're from.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Morgan Schoffler. I'm the Director of External Affairs at Youth and Arts. I'm also a Bret Hart resident, so San Rafael is deep in my blood. I'm here tonight to just speak to the exciting project with Local Edition Creative. I'm lucky enough to sit on the Steering Committee of the Downtown San Rafael Arts District on behalf of Youth and Arts. I've been involved since our original designation in 2017. And the money that we've received has really been like life-changing, really organization-changing for all of those involved and for our community. It's allowed us, as we talked about, to go through a whole strategic planning process to make sure we were all in line with the goals that we felt best served our community through the arts. We also were able to, with the supplemented grant, actually do an arts map, a public arts map that now exists and it actually folds into the county map. So it's just a great way for people to see what is available to them in San Rafael, to drive more people here. And then with Local Edition Creative, we're so excited to have these five public art spaces identified and just feel like it's another reason for people to come down to San Rafael and engage, not just look at the public art really, but to like enjoy the activation around it and all the vibrancy that will bring to the downtown area. So yeah, I'm just, I'm very excited and big support. And I does feel like there is a wave of art coming to San Rafael. And with these public art projects, people will consider hopefully doing more public art on private property as well and really make this a true arts destination. And one other thing I'll just say is it's really enabled our smaller community-based organizations like Youth and Arts to partner with other organizations to create new programming that's really serving our community better, especially the youth in our community. And we know that's what matters the most, so thank you so much.
Thank you Morgan. Anyone else like to comment? If you want to comment on this item, oh no, you have to come down then if you want to comment on this item. If we take questions.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Flannery and I live in San Rafael. And I'm wondering if somebody could explain why this is a temporary project? It was stated that it was going to be for three years and I just wanted to have more information about that.
Great question, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, not seeing any, I'm going to close the public comment. So we just had a question about the temporary nature and I actually had two questions that I, Morgan's input prompted for me. And one was, when these are completed, will we be able to show off the art to the state representatives so we get funded again? So I'd like to have what the outreach is on that. And then the public art map, it has public art, but is it possible to also locate on their studios and centers that aren't necessarily public, but still within the realm of art? Because I did look at the county one, it was only public art and we do have studios on there, including Youth and Arts. It would be great to have those designated, so if you could answer those three questions.
Great, I remember two of your three questions.
I've written down, don't worry.
Okay. Number one is, forgive me if I was misleading, this is a permanent program, yes. We have funding to do that in this fiscal year. And some of the artworks, we're thinking, especially one particular piece, might be rotating sculptural opportunity where we would have a sculpture for one year and then another sculpture a different year. So that's what the temporary would be. Otherwise, all pieces would be permanent installations.
Thank you, and then outreach to the state, are we thinking that far ahead?
Absolutely, that'd be a wonderful thing to outreach to the state. Morgan and I were recently on the call with the Cultural California Arts Commission and I know that they, they are in the process of designating 10 new cultural districts in the state of California. But one of the things that staff said on that call is that they really appreciated their visits to local jurisdictions. So we can reach out and try to invite them to visit again.
And then, thank you, and then finally, the public art map, if we can have it be expanded so it's not just public art. I don't know who holds that, I know county's doing one and Morgan said that we're doing one, but to have it.
The public art map is managed by the County of Marin's Cultural Association or Cultural Staffing. There is a function on our map that has organizations, arts organizations, and I can make that more available and perhaps in a net, in a future snapshot or something, we can push that out.
And maybe send a letter to the county saying maybe they'd be interested in that. If we've already acquired it, it's literally loading the data onto their existing map, just again, to expand the ecosystem. Thank you, additional questions or comments on this item? How about comments, Vice Mayor, go ahead and.
Super exciting, this is, there's one thing we learned during COVID is the importance of the arts and it is so wonderful to have this happening in our street. So excited to, to vote in favor of it.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtz, any comments?
Likewise, we're really excited by it. Thank you for joining us, Local Edition, and looking forward to the process.
I concur. It's fantastic that we have these additional funds. It's because we've already shown that we know how to utilize them and building on the successes we have and the theater artworks, we have a lot already here. So delighted that Local Edition is here, thank you Sage and Terry for coming down in person. We look forward to your collaboration and manifesting all of this, so thank you. Entertainer motion on this item, please.
I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement in amount not to exceed $250,000 between the City of San Rafael and Local Edition Marketing LLC to develop and implement a public art program funded by a grant from the California Arts Council for Downtown San Rafael Arts District.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill is absent, Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 3-0. Thank you, thank you Stacy, thank you Director. The next item is the 620 Canal Street Acquisition. And I see Assistant Economic. And I see Assistant Economic Director Greg Minor joining us. Oh, Councilmember Hill. Sorry, bring him back in. Sorry.
He's hanging out. I'm sorry. Hold on one second here. Oops, wrong one. Sorry.
Actually, I think, oh yeah, we wanted to differ. Yep.
While Greg is getting the PowerPoint up, I just wanted to make a few opening remarks about this item. This is a really big deal for the city and for the community. And I just, I feel like it's important to put a little context and framing to how we got to this point. This project represents a very unique opportunity to manifest a long-term community vision. All the way back in 2006, the city developed a canal neighborhood community-based transportation plan. And again, it was updated in 2022. That plan mentions that a canal crossing to the north of the canal neighborhood has been a community request since the first plan in 2006. It also states this improvement idea received more votes at the open house at the time than any other community improvement. Currently, the only way to walk or bike to the Montecito Shopping Center, San Rafael High School and San Pedro Elementary School is walking on Francisco Boulevard East to the Grand Avenue Bridge, which is a lengthy route for both bicyclists and pedestrians, which can add up to a mile or 20 minutes to the trip from third street destinations, including schools, shopping, restaurants and community services. So I felt like it's really important to kind of celebrate this moment of decades of a wish for the community to have the opportunity to have a location like this for a potential future bridge. I also just want to be clear about what we're doing tonight and manage some expectations about future funding that's needed. The funds that Greg is going to speak to are Measure A park funds. The idea of manifesting a park at this location is going to require additional funding and time. So even though we're at this really critical point, I just want to make it clear that we're also in a feasibility study around the bridge. That's also a very expensive endeavor. And so it's not like this is going to be a park and a bridge tomorrow. So I just wanted to make that clear. I also wanted to make a few acknowledgements. I want to thank the County of Marin for their partnership. In particular, Marin County Parks Planning Chief Carl Summers, who's really spearheaded this partnership between the city and the county, as well as County Executive Derek Johnson for his support of the project. Executive Director Omar Carrera of Canal Alliance has been integrally involved in all of this partnership as well. And Erica Williams, who's the Senior Project Manager for the Trust for Public Land, who came to us along with Canal Alliance and said, we want to help you make this happen. She wanted to be here tonight. She's unable to join us. But she wanted to express her gratitude to the city council for your vision and commitment to this project and for city staff for their professionalism and partnership throughout the process. Erica shared with me today that she's worked on a number of very complex land transactions across the Bay Area, and this one stands out as truly exceptional. She said she's never seen so many partners come together so quickly and so effectively to help realize a community vision. She wanted me to share the following on her behalf. The level of cooperation is a testament to San Rafael's leadership and to the city's longstanding relationship with the Canal Alliance and the Canal community. On behalf of the Trust for Public Land, she wanted to thank you for your consideration tonight for this item and for taking this potential critical next step to secure the 620 Canal Street for the greater public good. Last but not least, I do want to thank and acknowledge city staff. This has been a real heavy lift and has required a lot of cross-departmental collaboration, including Director Hinkle and Assistant Director Greg Minor with Community and Economic Development Department, Chief Assistant City Attorney Andrea Visvesh Wora. I'm working on that, Andrea. Director Miller and Director Kufa from Public Works and Parks and Recreation and for Assistant City Manager John Stefanski for their great work on getting this to this point. So turn it over to you, Greg.
I think you covered it. I think we're good. No. Yes, I do have some pretty slides and a little bit more context. So good evening. My name is Greg Minor. I'm with the Community and Economic Development Department. Before you this evening is a resolution that will enable the city to purchase the property located at 620 Canal Street, and that's shown here in this photo, to serve as a park and potential base of a bicycle and pedestrian bridge across the San Rafael Creek or Canal. In terms of the presentation, I'm going to highlight a couple facts about the property itself, then discuss some community plans that are relevant to this transaction and then share some next steps with respect to the purchase of the property and then next steps following the purchase itself. So here's that picture again. This is 620 Canal Street looking south. It's located on the southern side of the canal and it's a 1.65 acres piece of property. The next slide zooms out with the satellite image and a red dot showing the location of 620 Canal Street. You might be able to see from the track field across the canal that the 620 Canal Street is located across from San Rafael High School and Montecito Shopping Center. And why is that relevant? As you're aware, the city recently received a grant to explore the feasibility of a bicycle and pedestrian crossing in this precise area. And this is a map showing the East San Rafael Crossing Project area. And this project emerged after, as the city manager referenced earlier, decades of community engagement that identified the need for an alternative crossing for the canal neighborhood to better connect residents of the canal with other neighborhoods in the city and including critical amenities such as the high school and the shopping center. Here are just some of the plans that identify that need, as well as the need for more parks and public access to the canal. So this project, or this property rather, offered an opportunity to address both of those needs. So in 2024, the property became available for sale and the Trust for Public Land, on behalf of the city, began negotiating with the landowner, excuse me, negotiating with the landowner on our behalf and arrived at the purchase price listed at the bottom of this slide. The purchase anticipates a combination of funds from the city of up to $500,000 as well as a substantial grant from Marin Counties through their Measure A Open Space and Park Program, as well as funds from private philanthropy. So in terms of next steps, provided the city council adopts the resolution tonight, which would authorize the city manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement and expend up to $500,000 in city funds towards this project, as well as enter into a grant agreement with Marin County to receive Measure A funds. The next step would be the July 8th Board of Supervisor meeting, where the Board of Supervisors will consider the Measure A grant. And then the closing on the transaction is August 18th. So between now and then, we'll need to close the fundraising gap that Trust for Public Land is actively working on. And then the next immediate step would be the securing of the property. Following these immediate steps, there'll be a period of time in which the city and community members will be engaging in plans for the project as well as fundraising. This slide highlights two plans that are already, the study that was alluded to earlier in terms of the feasibility of a crossing, as well as the Southeast San Rafael specific plan, which is going to have, was going to be moving forward in 2026 in the latter half of this year. And those really are going to shape the ultimate development of this property as well as the neighborhood around the property. The purchase of the property will, let me take a step back. The development of the park and potential crossing may take several years, as the council is aware, to develop depending on funding sources. But securing the property now eliminates a lot of the uncertainty, as well as puts the city in a better position to secure grants related to both the park and the bridge crossing. So with that, a recommendation is for the city council to adopt the resolution as proposed. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Greg. I'll see if there are any questions. Yes, Vice Mayor.
Just one, as I'm looking at the satellite view, I see lots of boats there. What are the plans for the existing uses of the site?
That's, that's part of our negotiation with the Trust for Public Land. Is one of the next steps is finalizing our purchase and sale agreement with the Trust for Public Land as part of the transaction. And the goal would be to secure the site. And so as part of that, have a vacant site for the city to be able to advance the park and bridge crossing. I know Director Hinkle, who wants to...
You just add in, it's really, I think it's that opportunity, right? Here's the opportunity to bring that access point into the waterfront. So there's existing docks that are on there now, but our initial evaluation is they need some work. So when we look at kind of overall community planning, and that's really kind of the next steps. We talk about park planning as a longer duration cost and approach. I think that gives us an opportunity to evaluate that. If there are going to be boat docks or kayak launches or other type of recreational amenities at this phase, I think acquiring the property or securing that property is kind of the first step in that longer process.
But the vision is that the current businesses, we're not going to become a landlord to the current businesses.
Not at all.
The vision is to have them removed and a park with some type of amenities.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Okay, not seen any questions. I'll open the public comment on this item. Welcome to add your own questions or if you have any input on the project, on the item. Okay, not seen any. I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to this council to make any comments before we have a motion. Additional comments? Yeah. Councilmember Kurtz?
No, just thank you to everyone who's working on this. I think it's a great opportunity and we know, I mean, I think we have all talked about that bridge. We also know it's going to take, I mean, you say a while, it's going to take a while. But I think even any interim step we can do with having that land and having that park and having that vision for the future is a great opportunity. So thank you to the county and thank you for Measure A and all the rest and TPL to bringing this together. So and for the city staff to be working to work on that. Thank you.
Well said. Would you like to make a motion on this item?
I'm happy to make a motion. Let's find the motion. Recommended action, yep. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to, one, negotiate and execute a grant agreement in a form approved by the city attorney with Marin County for a minimum of $1,150,000 in Measure A Land Preservation and Park Access Program Funds, Measure A funds, accepting and appropriating grant funds. And two, negotiate and enter into a purchase and sale agreement and answer any documents for the property located at 620 Canal Street, provided the city contribution to the purchase price does not exceed $500,000 plus said Measure A funds received. And three, to take actions necessary to, necessary or incidental to carrying out the intent of this resolution.
Thank you. Second. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 4-0. Thank you. Thank you, Greg. The next item is a public hearing on the Bay Point Lagoons Assessment District. We also have Point San Pedro Road Media and Landscaping Assessment District. So we'll have both of those up now. I see Bernadette Jonathan joining us. Welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers. Jonathan Schellen, Deputy Director of Public Works. And I'm here tonight to present Bay Point Lagoons Assessment District. Without further ado, we'll get started. All right. So we have a public hearing for any interested person to file written protests with the clerk. During the hearing, council may order any changes to any of the matters in the engineer's report, which is attached to the agenda. If a majority of assessed persons protest during the increase of an assessment of any previous year exists, the proposed increase will be abandoned. And if a majority protest has not been filed, the city council may adopt a resolution confirming the diagram and assessment either as originally proposed or as changed. Little background in history, 1990 Bay Point Lagoons was formed to protect and enhance wildlife habitat and water quality in the Bay Point Lagoons, the adjacent ponds and Dyche Salt Marsh. Funds generated from the district support ongoing maintenance, repair and improvements of public lighting, landscape assets and associated infrastructure within the district. Well, note is, since then, we have continued to improve our maintenance of the area. And some of the prior concerns have been addressed to a point that they're no longer having to continue a maintenance of those. So we've readjusted some of the funding and how it's being categorized to kind of better encapsulate what today's needs are for the Assessment District. So you'll see that in the staff report and in the engineer report, how we re-categorize the funding and how that's being rolled over to better address today's needs for the Assessment District. No funding has been changed. It's just readdressing what the today's needs for the Assessment District and the stakeholders there are. So. Lagoon management. So city staff continue to manually regulate lagoon water levels. This is just manual use of the nearby storm drain and pumps to reduce the odor. It's gone through several iterations and the current process for managing those water levels has been one that's been addressing all their needs for the last couple of years. We found kind of a sweet spot. So it's been working out well. Infrastructure maintenance, pipes connecting to the lagoon, salt marsh are regularly cleaned. And we continue to see the need for an automated system. This is a very manually driven, staff-intensive time. So there is the option for automated sometime down the line. Water quality improvements. This last year, through a lot of research and work on the staff part, they've found a floating treatment island solution, which is not only beautiful to see and has a lot of positive effects for the lagoon itself and is cost-effective. It's really going to help hopefully reduce some of the need for managing the water as closely and spending as much staff time on it while also enhancing the area. Habitat planning. So we continue to stay engaged with our landscape consultant there, WRA, to develop vegetation and plan and address any community concerns. And so as I mentioned before, the two environmental funds have been merged into a Habitat Protection Fund with a combined balance of $110,000 projected by the end of this month. As I noted before, there's now the Habitat Protection Fund. That was prior to this year, two separate funds. We combine those to better address and allow funding to be used to meet today's needs for the Assessment District while maintaining their adherence to the general need and purpose of the Assessment District. That's projected to have $110,000 balance at the end of this year. And then the Pump Station Control Fund, which had always been its separate fund, continues to maintain its balance for $100,000 and $470 at the end of this fiscal year. The assessment has been unchanged since 1996. It continues from last year to this year at $131.44 per parcel. About 150 homes are part of the assessment, which includes several affordable housing parcels, which are exempt from the assessment. Every year, we continue to maintain our engagement with the residents of the area and their HOA representatives. This last year, we did some landscaping design work and continue to look at how we can better meet the needs of the Assessment District through that engagement and routine year-end closeout with the draft of the report and continue to build up their feedback for budget for next year. So the options at the end of this is, one, conduct the public hearing, adopt the resolution and order the levy of assessments for FY '24, '25, '26. Or two, do not adopt the resolution, which will result in no levy assessments for FY '25, '26. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Let me see if there are any questions. Out, Vice Mayor.
Two questions. First, on the Pump Station Control Fund, which has $100,000 in it. What is the expected cost to replace the pump station controls?
We don't have a late, a recent estimate. The last estimate was several years ago and that estimate by itself exceeded the $100,000. So the $100,000 would likely, if we were to pursue that avenue, would likely help fund a research into the design and getting estimates for the total fund that would be needed to replace it. I can say it's going to probably exceed probably $300,000. I can say it's going to probably exceed probably 300,000. With everything put into it for the design, the planning, and then actual execution of it. That's just a rough guess. But it is more than what we have saved. We also recognize. There would be likely a need to supplement this fund. With other funds, given the fact that this area and the work there does provide a public benefit beyond the assessment district. So there are a lot of other benefits provided from this area that aren't solely to the assessment district. So there would have to be discussions about. Other appropriate funding opportunities.
That's actually good news. I was worried it's one of those eight million dollar ones. So excellent, excellent. So that's good. So that leads to my next question, though. About the assessment being unchanged for 30 years. Why is that? Certainly just inflation would have it going up. And what is the process and what is? Your, the process to do that and also your strategy and thinking about changing that?
Yes. So let me readjust my last answer. That's just for the automation. It's not to replace the pump itself. It's just to allow the automation so that it doesn't have to be manually operated. At the location, but could be something that could be triggered by the op, over at the office at DPW. So. That's just for the automation of the pump and to be able to control it without being there manually. Currently, we have to have staff go manually climb up the pump. And do manual effort to open it and to close it.
So this is one of those eight million dollar pumps?
I'm not speaking to the pump.
No, okay. Okay, okay, okay. All right. So, all right. But there's a bigger number out there. So that makes your answer to the second question all the more important.
So the answer to the second question is, in the formation, the assessment district, it did not set up a escalation clause. So. The the amount is set by the formation of documents and would have to go. Back to council and to the community members there to potentially change that.
And so is your strategy that you've accepted that as a no go and you're never going to, or what is your line when you might come to us and say? We we need a new eight million dollar pump, huh? Or, and and therefore we would like to change this?
That is a great question, and I don't have an answer for when we'd like to change that. But I can defer to our Public Works Director.
It's trying. Yeah, so I don't have quite the answer for you, but I know that. In order to change the assessment district, there is like votes amongst all the assessment district. People whether or not, I think we actually have to dissolve it and then restart it. Which could be an option. I know there's discussions between Bay Point and Spinnaker and how only Bay Point's part of the assessment district. So it could be a joint effort, but. That is usually taken on by the people who are being assessed and not necessarily the city taking the lead on redoing the assessment district.
So we're just going to let this go and. Wait till they come and ask us?
Well, we can consider the next goal as an objective, so on whether or not we want to move forward with that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, that's very helpful. Yep.
Thank you, Mayor. So the presentation, I had the privilege. Four, almost four years ago, to actually take a field trip to the K's Pump Station. And I'll testify to what you're describing. To my memory, there is a. There's a wheel that you turn that has a screw and it lowers and raises it. But just to clarify what you're saying, it sounds like it would it would supplement that with actuators and sensors so that you could control it from. Morphew.
Correct. Yeah. So it'd be adding probably an electrical control pump. That would be able to be activated either through sensors, by setting thresholds, or by pushing a button at the DPW office location.
Gotcha. And the estimate for that, just to confirm, is around that 300 dollar, 300,000 dollar mark.
And that is several years old. So maybe technology has changed to bring the cost down. But likely cost has gone up, given inflationary costs too.
And I'm going to tie this to a comment you made during the report, which was you've you've got it into like a sweet spot. What does that mean? Like. There are times of the year and elevations of water that you go out there and you know the formula now?
So I'll say, several years ago, the city engaged with consultants to look at how to manage the odor and the color out there. And they came up with some various designs, one such as putting in a fountain to add aeration. Lots of costs, lots of routine maintenance. And then finally, through more recent staff kind of initiative, they started playing with just changing, refreshing or recharging the lagoon with saltwater. And tried that out. It's a very manual process, but it's affordable. You're paying for the staff to go out, stand there, open up the pump, stand there while. Fills up and then close it. And found kind of the manual little bit of elbow grease, solved the problem as long as we're doing routine checks. And so we now have a weekly report. One of our park staff will go out and send out a weekly report to myself and I think we have some Bay Point members on that email. With an assessment and through the various rain seasons, they will change the procedure for recharging or discharging into there. So it's a manual process, but it's cost effective and that is much different than some of the prior practices.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any additional questions right now. I'll open up the public comment on this item. If you'd like to offer your thoughts, now is your opportunity. Okay, I don't see anyone. So I will close the public comment and bring it back to the council for any additional comments and or a motion.
I'm ready for a motion.
Okay, please go ahead.
I move that we adopt a resolution confirming the engineer's annual report for the Bay Point Lagoons Assessment District and the assessment district diagram connected therewith. And ordering the levy and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2025, 26.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries four zero. Thank you. I see you switch Cs, Bernadette's now there for the Point San Pedro Road Median Landscaping Assessment District Report.
Ah, yes, let's do another one of these. Good evening, Mayor Kate, councilmembers, Bernadette Sullivan, senior management analyst, also with Public Works. And we are here for the public hearing of the Point San Pedro Median Assessment District. And I apologize as some of these will be a little bit repetitive. So there are four purposes of today's public hearing: to allow any person to file a written protest with the city clerk. For the city council to review and, if choose to, order changes to the engineer's report. Allow the opportunity for the majority of the assessed persons to protest against an increase in assessment. And for the city council to consider adopting a resolution confirming the assessment as is or as changed. The Point San Pedro Median Assessment District was formed in 2011 to repair and maintain 29 medians along Point San Pedro Road. From Sannerfell High to Biz Kane Drive. The medians weave in and out of Sannerfell and the county right of way, and both Sannerfell and the county residents along the route are included in the district. Here you can see. The area of the district outlined in red and then the medians along Point San Pedro in blue. The district charges two fees. The first repays. The initial 2013 bond used to reconstruct the 29 medians. Most property owners pay this annually and that is a fixed rate of 5870. Per EBU, an EBU is an equivalent benefit unit and that signs cost based on the property type. So a single family home would equal one EBU. The second fee, 59 dollars, covers an ongoing median operations and maintenance for all of the properties in the district. For most single family homes that didn't prepay the bond, the total annual fee. Is proposed to be 117 dollars and 17 cents, which is calculated using the San Francisco Oakland Urban Consumer Price Index or CPI. Here is the proposed operation and maintenance budget for fiscal year 25, 26. As you can see, the majority of the costs associated are going to be landscape contractor costs as well as the utility bills. The cities, and specifically the park staff, manage and the maintenance and operation of the medians. And city staff work with the Point San Pedro Coalition Committee to determine priorities and to discuss the improvements. And as part of this communication, the committee has voiced concerns about the lack of substantial landscaping. They've seen tree decline and there's been some increased weeds. And the city takes these concerns very seriously and we agree with the committee. We have reached out to Gardeners Guild, our landscape contractor, and asked them to address these concerns. In response, Gardeners Guild is adding additional crews to the medians to bring them back on track at no additional cost to the city. We will continue to monitor and reevaluate the work of Gardeners Guild. And if no significant improvements are found, the city can terminate the contract and we will work with the committee to hire someone who does meet the district's needs. So have two options: conduct the public hearing and adopt the resolution for the levy of assessments for fiscal year 25, 26. Or do not adopt the resolution, which will result in no levy. And of course, we're here to answer any additional questions you may have.
Thank you, Bernadette, and thank you for highlighting the community concerns. We did receive a letter from the Point San Pedro Coalition, which. Road Coalition, which I think addresses some of the concerns, or the concerns, all the concerns in that letter.
Yes.
Thank you. Additional questions? Additional questions? Okay, not seen any questions from the council. I'll open up the public comment on this item. If you'd like to comment, now is your opportunity. Not seen anyone. I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to the council for a motion. But first I'll say, thank you. I know that these programs take a lot of work and and it's important and working with the community because the assessment districts. Are a critical tool for communities to beautify the areas that is right in their in their neighborhood. So. So thank you to both of you for for bringing this forward and continuing to nurture and work on it because they're both really important. So. With that, I would entertain a motion.
I'd be happy to make that motion and to second your gratitude to the the city staff. I know this has been a longstanding challenge and the community really appreciates your efforts. With that in mind, I move that we adopt a resolution confirming the engineer's annual lever report for the Point San Pedro Road Median Landscaping Assessment District. And the assessment diagram connected therewith and ordering the levying collection of assessments for fiscal year 2025, 26.
Second. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries four zero. Thank you both. The next item is roadside memorial policy. And Bernadette, you are here to help walk the council through this item as well. Welcome.
Thank you.
And I saw the slides earlier, so I know that you have that.
There, there, sorry.
Nope, there you go.
There we go. Okay. Good evening again, Bernadette Sullivan with Public Works, mayor and councilmembers. Today, I will be sharing a proposed policy that aims to. Respectfully balance the community's desire to honor loved ones lost in tragic incidents with the city's responsibility. To maintain public safety and accessibility. Losing a loved one in a traffic collision is devastating. In the midst of grief, families sometimes turn to roadside memorials as a visible way to mourn and honor a person lost. The same time, we have seen safety and maintenance concerns when these memorials are left unmanaged or placed in unsafe locations. These include blocked sidewalks, driver distractions, or difficulty maintaining public infrastructure. We can see. So we've looked at what other cities in California have done. And what we've found is that most cities limit the duration of a roadside memorial or offer a safer, more permanent alternative. For example, Novato and San Mateo County limit memorials to 30 days, while cities like Roseville allow for 45 days. Caltrans, which maintains the state's highways, does not allow for roadside memorials. However, they do have a victims memorial sign program. As a permanent alternative. So the purpose of this policy is to strike a thoughtful balance. The proposed policy overview. Includes that memorials may be installed near incident locations, but must not obstruct walkways or infrastructure. Applicants must complete an application to establish memorial. The site must comply with ADA standards and cannot block curb ramps or pathways. And memorials would be allowed for up to 30 days. For safety reasons, certain items like glass, sharp objects, or unattended candles would not be allowed. Items that are not allowed would be removed, but stored for 60 days to allow time for the family to come and collect them. We also would not allow for amplified noise or sound or loud music to be played at memorial sites. And there are some size and safety regulations. 24 inches height, that's measured from the ground surface, width along the roadway, and then depth. We recognize that 30 days may not feel long enough sometimes. And that is why we would also like to promote a long term solution to honor loved ones through the city's commemorative bench and table program. And this is an opportunity to. Place a bench or table in one of the city's parks or along one of the trails. This is one I snapped a picture of on the Shoreline Trail just the other day. And it's not only memorialized as a loved one, but it contributes to the broader community. So with that, staff recommend adopting the resolution to approve the roadside memorial policy. And I thank you and I'm here to answer any specific questions.
Thank you. Question, yeah, Councilmember Kurtz, go ahead.
Thank you for you doing this. It's it's good to have a policy. I hope we never have to use it. The one area that I have a question around is the applicants must fill out an application. Many times these happen very quickly and organically. And I'm wondering how the city would be following up with an applicant or how the applicant knows. Though it's, I'm just sort of curious about that process and if that's a necessary step.
Yes, absolutely. We did consider that and we want to make sure that the city is making every attempt to contact. The family or the persons who placed the memorial before any items were removed. We would make that attempt first. And allow for the parties to fill out the application. We tried to make it very simple. Because we do understand that it is a process. And then. Once the application is filled out, we would do 30 days from the time of the application. So. If something organically came and was around for 10 days and we were able to contact, had the application filled out, we would honor the 30 days from that time. Just so that we're not moving things in a time of.
And could the application be completed by anyone in in support of this memorial?
Yes.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Bernadette, for the report. You had mentioned the bench and picnic table sponsorship program. Can you give a. Order of magnitude of the cost for for those types of items? My quick look at the website while you're here. Was a couple thousand dollars, 25 or 2,300 for a steel bench and 3,500 for. And then it didn't show the the picnic table, but I just wanted to get a sense of the. It's same amount. It's about a couple thousand.
Yeah, so those are a more expensive option. And I do believe, and I can check with our, I know that it's on the website, but I can check with. The rec department that covers that because I think there might be some sponsorship opportunities there as well to help with affordability.
Gotcha. And then one other question is, it was kind of, it was implied that. City staff might be encountering issues of safety that prompted this move. Without getting into specific details, is that is that? Is that more than implied that that we had been encountering some safety issues with memorials that had come up?
We really look at best practices from other cities and I think that. Personally don't know of any memorials in the city that have caused some safety issues, but that. When we are talking about blocking sideways and was the city's obligation to honor ADA compliance, that. Larger size items would go into that. And then Director Miller.
Yeah, part of this has been spurred because of our adjacent jurisdictions who unfortunately have had fatalities. And then. Speaking with those Public Works directors on just the effort it takes to try to remove them and the sensitivity around it and the importance of having a policy in place. We have had a few memorials in Sannerfell. And I know our team, some of which had glass candles that were broken after, you know, the weather and after, you know, a month or so. And then. So we do have to deal with picking up broken glass. And so we're just trying to. And so we're just trying to avoid those types of situations, too.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I just want to make another comment to, um, Director Miller was saying. I mean, obviously, it's a time of grief for people, and they're putting these memorials together because they're heartbroken. And it, it puts the city in a difficult position in that moment of grief and mourning to say, you can't have this here, you know? So the idea of the application isn't to be bureaucratic, it's just to make sure there's some communication so that we can honor how they want to do this in a, in a safe way. And then it also puts us, right now, it's a, if it happens, it's a reactive thing, which feels really insensitive to, you know, those who are, you know, have lost someone, so we're trying to be proactive and socialize it. So again, hope we never have to use it. But then, we're not having this dialogue, like arbitrarily, in the moment, um, just to honor the loved ones.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any additional questions. I'll open up the public comment on this item. I'd like to offer your thoughts. Now is your opportunity. Okay, not seeing anyone, I'll close the public comment and bring it back and concur. Thank you, Bernadette, and, and like Councilmember Kurtz, she's absolutely right. We hope we don't ever have to use it, but it's important to have the policy. Otherwise, it puts the city in a really untenable position otherwise. So, um, this is really well crafted. And I especially appreciate that you went and looked at other jurisdictions. We always want to borrow best practices, and I felt like you really did. So, any additional comments? Okay, then I would, Councilmember Hill, would you like to make a motion on this item?
Yes, move we adopt a resolution approving the roadside memorial policy to establish procedures for handling memorials placed within the city of San Rafael right of way.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries four zero. Thank you, Bernadette. The final item, um, on our business agenda tonight is the Affordable Housing Funding Recommendation. And I'm turning it over to Alexis Captainian. Come and Director Hinkle.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Kate and council members. Micah Hinkle, Community Economic Development Director. Um, it is the CED, uh, presentation to get to, to council. And I'm really excited that we're making such great progress from this team. So, um, hat, my hat's off to Alexis, uh, and the Housing Division, which is Alexis, um, for moving this forward. Um, uh, it, it is, it's a, a, a lot of task in this one, uh, management of, um, our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Um, with that, I'm going to turn it over to her for a brief presentation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Micah, and good evening, uh, city council, um, and members of the public. My name is Alexis Captainian. I'm the housing manager for the city of San Rafael. And tonight, I'm presenting, uh, funding recommendations for the 2025 Affordable Housing Notice of Funding Availability. So a little bit of, uh, background. Uh, the city has an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and the funds in the trust fund are restricted for, um, solely for increasing and expanding the supply of, of housing that's affordable to very low, low and moderate income households. Um, the revenues from the fund come both from, uh, affordable housing in lieu fees from market rate residential projects. So when there's a market rate residential project, the developer can choose to pay a fee instead of building, um, required affordable housing units on site. Um, and then also through commercial linkage fees, when we have a commercial project that generates a greater need for affordable housing. So both of those are revenues that go into this fund that then the city council allocates for affordable housing projects. Um, I want to talk a little bit about, um, the timeline for this notice of funding availability. The city, um, periodically issues a notice. And, um, this year, that notice was issued in January. Prior to that, we came to the city council in December with an informational report and a recommended amount for that, uh, Notice of Funding Availability, or NOFA. And this was the first year that we issued a NOFA jointly with the county of Marin. Uh, we included five hundred thousand dollars from our Affordable Housing Trust Fund based on the funds available. And, um, we did this to reduce, uh, administrative burden on our applicants who, um, are often applying both for county and city, and sometimes state funds that are administered by the county. Um, so that NOFA opened in January twenty-second. It closed February nineteenth, and we had three submissions that totaled nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars in requests. And, um, these are those three funding requests that we received. We had a new construction project that's in the pre-development phase, a, um, existing apartment complex looking to rehabilitate, and then, um, an acquisition project. And the total number of units across these three projects was ninety units. Um, and like I said, a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar request across the, the three. Um, a little bit more about the process. So from late February through March, we had a city staff panel that reviewed the responses and formed preliminary recommendations. And then city staff presented those preliminary funding recommendations to the Housing and Homelessness Subcommittee on April first. Um, and the Subcommittee provided feedback to staff. That Subcommittee includes Mayor Kate and Councilmember Kurtz. Then, after the Subcommittee, we had one project that, um, because of requirements that, um, floodplain requirements that were uncovered during the review process had not initially been recommended for funding. That applicant, um, came to us in April and said, can we provide an, a revised rec, uh, proposal for consideration? Um, the NOFA language allows the city to do that. And so we, uh, asked all applicants, we gave all applicants the opportunity to provide revised materials by April twenty-fifth. Um, it was optional, and we did receive a revised application from, uh, EAH. And, uh, on April thirtieth, the panel met and finalized, uh, recommendations. Then in mid-May, we, we provided an updated memo to the Subcommittee and applicants, uh, with those updated funding recommendations. And we also posted that on the, uh, website. So a little bit about the evaluation criteria that was used to evaluate these responses. Um, these six criteria come from City Council Resolution fourteen seven sixty, which was adopted in twenty twenty. Um, the first is community benefit. So it provides a tangible, cost-effective benefit to the community and the intended beneficiaries. Um, the development team has the capacity and experience to move the project forward. Um, management capacity, meaning the organization is healthy and has the skills to manage the project, including track record of management of affordable housing. Um, readiness to proceed, um, depending on where a project is and what type of project it is, that can look different. It can be site control, um, or, and/or, uh, financial resources committed, um, or actively pursuing resources for the project. Uh, leverage and collaboration. So, um, we want to see other pro, uh, sources, um, committed to the project. Uh, we don't want to be, the city typically doesn't want to be the only funder involved in a project. Um, and then finally, a reasonable per-unit city subsidy based on the population served and the type of project. We also looked at other factors, including proximity to transit. Um, are there larger units that accommodate families? Is, does it serve very low-income or extremely low-income households? Uh, does it include at least twenty percent permanent supportive housing? Um, and then does it contribute to our housing supply, um, increase, um, our housing supply overall? And then finally, we looked at how it aligns with housing element goals, including ending and preventing homelessness in San Rafael, combating housing discrimination, eliminating racial bias, and undoing historic patterns of segregation, ensuring housing habitability and maintenance, and meeting housing needs through a variety of housing choices and affordability levels throughout the city. So with that, I'll, I'll move through our three projects. And the first is, um, five nineteen Fourth Street. The applicant is Abode Housing. And they are applying for a project that would, um, construct fifty-six, uh, mostly one-bedroom units for very low and extremely low-income house, um, households on the city-owned property at five nineteen Fourth Street. Fifty percent of the units would be designated for formerly homeless individuals, and they would, uh, provide onsite supportive services. Um, and they're in the pre-development phase. So this funding would support the applicant in completing the planning application and entitlement project process. Um, entitlement is a major milestone. Um, and sometimes obtaining early funding can be challenging, um, but it's absolutely essential for feasibility, um, analysis and moving the project forward. So, um, staff's recommendation is a two hundred thousand dollar grant for this project. Um, I want to note, the, the, um, pre-development budget is three point two million, um, of a total estimated cost of around fifty-four million. Um, there are a couple of contingencies associated with this recommendation because it is early funding. Uh, we are, uh, recommending that it be contingent on Abode securing, uh, the remainder of the funding needed to complete planning entitlement, which is estimated at six hundred thousand. So that's a chunk of that overall three point two million. Um, and then the second piece is that the city, um, has a right to all the reports, designs, and other materials generated during this pre-development phase. And that's so that if at some point the applicant is unable or unwilling to move the project forward, that the city is able to leverage those materials to, to still move forward with affordable housing on that site. Um, this is just a little bit more about the pre-development funding sources. So, um, the applicant has an application pending with a bag for priority sites technical assistance, so that's specifically for pre-development activities. Um, the Marin, they submitted an application to the Marin County NOFA. Um, however, because of the state PLHA requirement for site control, um, they were not able to take advantage of that opportunity this spring. Um, and so they will be, um, submitting an application through their rolling trust fund for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. And we, um, they have been told by county staff that they would welcome an application. It would not have that site control requirement that was, um, constraining the state funding. And then, uh, Abode has also, um, put in a hundred thousand dollars, um, of its own, uh, dollars into the project so far. Um, and then that, so that would, um, that's for the pre-entitlement, so that's the six hundred thousand dollar bucket. And then post-entitlement, um, they're looking at a community development financial institution loan for about two point eight million. Um, the next project is four fifty-five Canal Street. Um, the applicant is EAH Housing. Um, EAH has, um, owned the property at, uh, four fifty-five Canal Street for several decades. Um, and they are looking to rehabilitate this twenty-eight-unit apartment complex that was built in the seventies, um, located in the Canal neighborhood. Um, all units are deed restricted for households, um, very low-income households, fifty percent area median income, and would continue to be deed restricted. Um, they have a mix of unit sizes, including some units for larger families. And, um, as I mentioned, this is the applicant that submitted a revised scope of work to address immediate seismic electrical safety and waterproofing needs at the property. So the recommendation from staff is for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar residual receipts loan. Um, we're recommending a loan for this project because of, um, the nature of the project, and, uh, a grant, uh, can, can trigger, uh, certain state requirements that make the cost of the project overall, um, greatly increase. Um, a little bit about the rehabilitation funding sources for this project. Um, they were previously awarded seven hundred thousand dollars in home funds in twenty twenty-four. They also, just this month, received an additional, uh, approximately two hundred thousand dollars in home funds from the Board of Supervisors, and, um, have committed fifty thousand in their own reserves towards this project. And then the, the third project is, uh, the acquisition of one fifty-eight to one sixty-six A Park Street. Uh, the applicant is Marin Foster Care Association. And this is for the acquisition of six one-bedroom units that would be restricted at seventy percent of area median income, and they're specifically for transition-age youth. And the project would also provide case management services through a partner organization. There would be no displacement of the existing tenants. Fifty percent of the units, or three units, are currently occupied by transition-age youth, and the rest will be upon departure of existing tenants. And this award would help repay a bridge loan. The property was acquired in January of this year. Um, so the recommendation is for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant towards the acquisition. And a little bit about other funding sources in the project. They have a private donor loan at zero percent, a million-dollar loan. Uh, a loan for Marin Community Foundation at four percent for three hundred thousand. Uh, the Marin County Housing Trust Fund has awarded three hundred thousand dollars. And, um, as the council knows, the county trust fund requires a, some sort of contribution from the city to move forward. Um, Marin Foster Care has committed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in its savings, and then an additional sixty-five thousand dollars in private donations. So this is just a sort of roll-up of the three projects. Um, the total funding recommendation is for the full five hundred thousand that was, uh, put out through the NOFA in January. Um, I do want to note, um, we're recommending a higher level of subsidy for the Park Street project compared to the other two projects, um, in particular, due to the special population served. Foster care, uh, youth, uh, youth transitioning out of the foster care system are at a, um, higher, have a higher prevalence of homelessness. Um, and, uh, the panel wanted to, um, both, uh, increase the funding from the additional Subcommittee recommendation, uh, recommendation that was brought to the Subcommittee in April per the Subcommittee's recommendation, um, based on additional information provided during the Subcommittee meeting, and also given the special population served. Um, so the city council's options are to adopt the resolution, amend the resolution, and adopt, um, direct staff to provide additional info or take no action. Um, and we are here to answer any questions you have. I believe the applicants are also all in the audience. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexis. Additional questions? Uh, we'll start with the Vice Mayor.
I have, I have two questions. One looks forward and the other one looks back. So I'll start with the one looking forward. You said that the funding for, I think, the middle project had some contingencies. What happens if, to the funding, if those contingencies, um, fall through?
Great question. So if, if the applicant is unable to, uh, compile the six hundred thousand that, uh, is required to get through entitlement, the city will not distribute the funds to the applicant. Um, and they'll remain in the trust fund for other uses. Uh, and, um, I blink, uh, excuse me, let me look at my notes here. Oh, so the, the, uh, city has an existing exclusive negotiating agreement with the, uh, applicant because it is a city-owned property. And so, um, in order, uh, part of that exclusive negotiating agreement already says products developed through this project, um, and through the pre-development phase, um, the city has a right to all of those products. So again, if the city had, if they had reached the six hundred thousand, we'd given out the funds, and then something happened and we weren't able to move forward, the city would have those products and be able to move forward with a different partner, potentially.
Okay, thank you. That's the looking forward question. Now the looking backwards question. Um, as I was reviewing the resolution adopting the, um, criteria from twenty twenty, um, I noticed that there's an option to get audited financial statements and, um, ongoing reports, basically from recipients. And I'm wondering if we've ever looked back over the whole history, actually, of, of, of this program to see, um, what happened? Uh, uh, do we track any of the, is, is there, is, is there, is there anything done like that?
So we do track, particularly for projects that receive a residual receipts loan. Um, I work with our finance department to track those projects, and they have annual submissions around, um, the cash flow of those projects and whether they, uh, will provide, um, residual receipts to the city or payment to the city that year based on their cash flow. or payment to the city that year based on their cash flow. Um, we, uh, have not tracked as closely the projects that receive grant funding, but I think that's certainly something that we could, um, institute.
Right. And just to look back comprehensively at sort of a strategic level to get insights, success stories, lessons learned, um, see, um, what, what has happened. It might be a great tally of all, all of these units. So just an, a thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the report. And, um, I am going to direct some questions, but I'm sort of almost directing the questions back to the subcommittee, which is at me. So, um, so, um, how many current, do you have a, a recollection or know, at this point, our housing stock? How many one-bedroom, um, are currently available at 70% of AMI? About, you know, to now, today? Do we have any idea?
So in the entire housing stock in, in San Rafael, at 70% of AMI, I don't have a number for that, but I'm happy to get back to you.
Do you have a thought? I mean, just sort of thought?
So, um, so we have, um, a number of projects that are below market rate restricted. Not many of them are restricted at the 70% level. Um, usually they're either, so that falls kind of in the middle of the low-income range.
Yeah.
Um, but we do have, um, about 50 nonprofit properties restricted at a below-market-rate level, if that's helpful.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. And then I think tying into what Councilmember Bushy talked about, looking at the history, I'm, I am now questioning funding pre-development projects, um, based and recommending that at this point where, I don't know if we've done that in the past. I believe we have done pre-development, but seeing this, the pace of development projects these days and the concern around that, um, I am concerned about funding pre-development, um, where the project hasn't contributed much as the, as the owners into that, where there would be receiving more from the city than they have actually contributed to that project. And I recognize the benefit of that project at the end of the day, but we haven't seen these projects materialize. And not just that project, but projects across the board. Um, I'm a little bit concerned about putting for pre-development. And the, so the question is really around the value around your thoughts around putting funding and supporting pre-development where we are today. Um, and then lastly, the question around, I know we've used it in the past, the per-unit subsidy, you know, per unit. It's now looking from my perspective, I don't think that's a good measure. Um, I think there's other things we need to look at because we're not looking at apples-to-apples projects. And I don't think that per-unit tells the story of, um, other things. And I'm wondering what other values we might want to consider, um, which may take us back to having to relook at the resolution again, because that was something we had, I believe, built into that resolution. Um, but I think there's other things about looking at cost avoidance, looking at population impact weighting, speed to housing readiness, some other factors that we might want to use as weighing. And I know you do look at a lot of those different factors, but I think we might want to under, not use the visibility of the per-unit subsidy costs. Because to me, that doesn't tell the story.
Can I, um,
There were two questions in there.
Yes, there were, there were questions. There were some comments, there were questions. Thank you for the questions. So I, I specifically want to respond to the why fund pre-development. I'm really glad you asked because I didn't go into it in the presentation. And, um, part of it is, um, the structure of this particular project on city-owned property. Um, and part of it is the current affordable housing landscape. So, um, with a city-owned property or a, or a publicly-owned property that is not, um, owned by the developer, uh, it becomes, it's more difficult to obtain pre-development dollars. Because typically, the developer owns the land, and the developer is able to go to a community development financial institution and say, hey, I have this land that I can collateralize to get pre-development dollars. And so the tricky thing about, it's wonderful to develop on city-owned property. It's a great opportunity, and this is kind of one of the tricky points of, um, they don't have the land to collateralize yet. And so, um, that's part of why this sort of catalytic funding is, um, is more needed. And, uh, the other piece is the current affordable housing funding landscape. Um, so we, we've, it's, it's always challenging. Um, but I think particularly right now is a, a challenging time in terms of the state budget. It's a challenging, um, uh, time in terms of the, you know, federal landscape and the level of uncertainty. Um, and so, um, I think both looking at, um, the overall financing landscape and then the particulars of this project is partial, is part of the reason why, um, the panel was in favor of providing pre-development funding.
And I'd say the other way, maybe it's a question of, should we be putting pre-development in for that project? That was more of a comment than a question.
If I can only, uh, add just, um, really kind of the policy-level questions that really comes into council about affordable housing. This really speaks to the city's inclusionary housing, uh, requirements. You know, currently we're at 10%. Um, this is something that, uh, is on our work program to bring back to council for, for that policy evaluation. We have been working that with consultants. So when some of these questions come about, about like, what is San Rafael's affordability levels? How much, you know, um, what is the policy-level requirement in order to get these units built? Uh, so, and also understand the market, how it ebbs and flows. So the challenges within that. Um, so I'm, I'm excited to work with the Housing, uh, Division to bring that forward to, to the Subcommittee and then later to council later this year. So. But I do think it kind of speaks at some of the policy-level questions you're asking about right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember, have questions?
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Uh, thank you for the presentation. I have two questions, and I'm going to build a little bit on, well, I will build directly on what Councilmember Kurtz raised, which, uh, I won't necessarily say why. I think that why allocate toward pre-development? I think that that's clear, but perhaps, um, I'm seeing a potential amendment to consider, um, the magnitude. So I know that there's value for, uh, a developer to say, hey, we have momentum. We have these diverse funding sources. Um, what would be the effect to still allocate funding toward pre-development, but at a lower magnitude that there would still? Can you comment on the, the fact that they would still have value in diversification of different funding sources?
Uh, I think if the city were to allocate pre-development funding for this project at a lower level, um, the applicant would then need to go out and find, um, other sources um, in, in, to be able to get to that $600,000 threshold to be able to move to, um, through the entitlement process and reach that milestone. I'm not sure. Did that answer your question?
Partially. I think I was more interested in, is there still value that they could still walk around and say, look, we have, we still have diversity. The city did allocate funding.
I understand. Thank you for clarifying. Yes, absolutely. I think that, um, city dollars and, and local contribution and support for a project, um, are, are very valuable when, um, looking to attract other funders.
Thank you. Um, and although this is not coming from staff, I am interested in understanding the landscape of transition age youth. Um, you know, across California, my understanding is that there is a gap in that, in our journey of our, of our foster youth as they transition into adulthood. And there is a, there's a critical need, um, across the state. But I am curious about, um, what staff feel, or at least think, rather, not feel, but what staff think about, um, making that a determination to prioritize, um, people in this, in this situation.
I think in this case, and this is really, um, a discussion that occurred in the Subcommittee meeting too, is about the challenge of these projects. They're all worthy. They're all beneficial. We're in need across the board for all housing types. Um, to pick one over the other is always a challenge. It really depends on the project and the ability to move them forward. That's always been the struggle. Um, how challenging it is to actually acquire land and develop it, particularly at the very low, and in this case for, uh, transitional youth. There, there's these factors across the board of how difficult affordable housing is to develop, uh, particularly in Marin County here in San Rafael. So that, that's really on the, on the policy level, and that's really something that, that we're really looking for direction as we kind of explore more into this. Um, what, is, is there a desire to actually wait these in a different way? Um, so it does kind of put us at, at odds. When we did look at the original funding request for this, our, uh, staff's original recommendation was much lower. Um, yeah, 60,000, I believe, was the number, and we came back almost doubling it, uh, with that feedback from the Subcommittee. So it's trying to kind of get this, the hard part is we'll never make these projects whole. We're always a small piece of a gap finding, and it's leveraging dollars upon dollars. Uh, it's important, uh, that the city does participate in these because it's the leverage opportunity is really the critical factor we're after.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now I just had one follow-up question might be kind of hard to ask, I, or hard to answer. I was trying to recall, maybe the Vice Mayor might remember as well. There's been another example of a city-owned property that was then developed into affordable housing. And I was trying to think of Centertown or Lone Pole. Yeah, so those, and that was done 35 years ago. So in the last two decades, this, we haven't done a project like this. So is that correct?
That is correct.
And, and the financing and the state laws and all that have changed. Okay. Because I was just trying to figure out, like, usually we learn from what we've done before, but it seems to me those projects were done so long ago that it's, it's kind of a new, a new approach. Not a new approach, but a new landscape. Okay. Yeah, it was more a curiosity question. Thank you. You might have more questions that come up after we have the public comment. So I'll open up the public comment on this item. If you'd like to, um, provide your thoughts, please do. You are welcome, but not required to say your name and what part of San Rafael that you live in.
Good evening, Mayor Collin, and members of the City Council. My name is Mary Ann Lim. I'm here on behalf of EAH Housing, the nonprofit affordable housing sponsor and manager of Riviera Apartments at 455 Canal Street. We strongly support the staff's recommendation to award 150,000 for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to support urgent repairs at Riviera, a 28-unit deeply affordable, um, housing community that has served low-income families in the Canal since the 1970s. The funds will help preserve this important affordable housing stock serving 70, 76 residents, uh, in, in San Rafael, primarily Latino families, which have lived there an average of, uh, 15 years. Most earn well below 60% of the area median income, with their average household income being just under 45,000 a year. Our latest data also shows that, um, about 60% of the households have one to three or more children as dependents who rely on housing for, um, stability and security. Um, I also want to remind you that, you know, HUD's 2011 analysis of, of impediments, um, concluded that affordable housing in Marin was concentrated in the Marin City and San Rafael Canal neighborhoods. Due to this concentration, HUD prohibited the awarding of federal funds to these areas, resulting in limited resources to help maintain the existing affordable assets for many years. Now that the prohibition of federal funding has lifted, we've successfully secured $902,000 of Federal Home Investment Partnerships Program funding from the County of Marin. And the city's support would help close a critical gap and ensure we don't delay the most needed safety improvements at this property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Carolyn Flannery, and I'm the founder of Make It Home, a community partner of Marin Foster Care. And I'm also a board member of MFCA. I'm a resident of San Rafael, and first I want to thank you all for your service. We're glad you're all safe. Um, Make It Home has served all of the organizations applying for this funding. There's a few things we know to be true. First, a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. Marin Foster Care's Association's housing project is already purchased, occupied, and making an impact. Three foster youth have moved in with units furnished by Make It Home. That's three out of six units serving transitional-age foster youth within six months of purchase. Second, climate change is real, and it's affecting all of us, especially the Canal community. But the EAH project proposed for that area was originally rejected due to floodplain issues. Climate resilience assessment and action planning are still underway in that area, and we must wait for that plan to be complete before investing in a project that may ultimately need to be reimagined due to the climate risks. The EAH project has also received Marin County home funding while MFCA's project has not. Third, foster youth are our most vulnerable population. Unlike other groups, they have no families to fall back on, no safety net. They're our responsibility. If not San Rafael, then who? This project is move-in ready. It's working. It's housing kids today, not years from now. I respectfully urge you to allocate the full $250,000 requested by Marin Foster Care. These young people can't wait. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ashley Hurd. I'm the Executive Director for Marin Foster Care and also a foster parent and a San Rafael resident. Um, we are grateful to the city of San Rafael to considering our requests for $250,000 to support our housing initiative for transition-age foster youth. This funding will be allocated to our apartment building that we acquired specifically to address the critical shortage of affordable housing for young people aging out of foster care. And to answer one of your questions, where do they go before we purchased our buildings? They go out of county, and they go far, and they have to start their adulthood life in a place that they have no idea what it's about. Our model is already working. The building is fully operational. Transition-age youth are living there, and we're providing wraparound support that helps them succeed. This isn't a future plan or a theoretical proposal. It's a proven, cost-effective solution that's delivering real impact right now. Our very first tenant in this building moved from a homeless shelter to his own apartment, where he is now gaining his independence and self-worth for, for someone who is willing to take a chance on him. The average cost per unit in our model is about $375,000. That's a fraction of what's being proposed in other developments, one of which we understand will cost far more per unit and is still in pre-development phase. With our program, the city is investing in something that's already in place and producing outcomes. We are informed that we do not have access to the CDBG money because the city elected to prioritize our housing trust fund for our project instead. For that reason, the full amount is absolutely critical to us. These young people have aged out of systems without the safety nets many of us take for granted. What they need now is stability. That's what this housing provide, and that's what your support would sustain. We believe this is exactly the kind of solution San Rafael's Housing Trust Fund is designed to support, something that's local, urgent, efficient, and effective. And that's why I'm asking you that you pl, please fund this project in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Amanda Milholland, and I've been a resource parent in Marin for six years. Over that time, I've welcomed 15 kids into my home. I've seen firsthand how difficult the transition to adulthood is for kids who have already lived through trauma, heartbreak, and instability. Most parents don't expect their kids to turn 18 and suddenly be ready to face the world on their own, even if they think they can. Young adults still need guidance, but for foster youth, entering adulthood is often lonely, scary, and it often means no more help, no home, no safety, no support, no couch to crash on. In many cases, they're expected to launch into adulthood alone. This housing project is critical solution. It provides stable, affordable apartments so youth can learn to live independently without falling into homelessness. It gives them time to mature, develop life skills, and transition into independence the right way, not through crisis. We've already invested in these kids during their time in foster care. We can't walk away just when they need us the most. With this project, San Rafael can lead by example, showing that we value every young person and believe in their strengths and their futures. Please support Marin Foster Care Association's vision. Let's give these youth more than just survival. Let's give them a future. Please provide full funding for the apartment building. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Leanne Stiker. I'm a San Rafael-
I'm a San Rafael resident, and I have worked with former Foster Care Association for three and a half years. At MFCA, I manage the Resource Center, where our foster youth and families can come in and get the things they need, such as diapers, PJs, clothes, shoes, as well as toys, household items, and toiletries. One of the great parts of my job is I get to know the many kids in care when they visit and talk about what's going on in their lives. Over the last year, I've been able to hear firsthand just how important affordable and stable housing is for our aging-out foster youth. I've seen the relief when they come in to tell me they finally got an apartment, and the excitement in their voices when they are picking out items for their new place. But my heart breaks when others mention that they don't have a place yet, or worse, have to move out of county because there isn't a place available for them. I think of my own children at eighteen years old with all of the support and security they had and still struggled their first year of college on their own. Can you imagine not having any support or security, especially not a place to call home in the community you feel most comfortable? Sometimes we do an exercise where the group at Marin Foster Care goes around to talk about their why, why they have chosen to be a foster parent, advocate, or volunteer. My original why has evolved and become much clearer to me in the last year. My why is that I want to be the safe place or person for these vulnerable kids that wasn't there for me in my youth. I can only help to provide the emotional support and items that go into their homes, but you have the opportunity to help provide those homes. I'm urging the council to be there for these vulnerable youth and provide the full funding for the apartment building so that they have a home to put their things in that is safe and stable and a place to call home.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alexandra, and I'm a proud former foster youth from Marin County. I'm here today to share my piece of my, a piece of my journey and express my deepest gratitude, gratitude to the Marin Foster Care Association for the life-changing support I've received. Thanks to their housing program, I have been given more than just a roof over my head. I've been given stability, dignity, and hope for a better future. Growing up, stability was something I could only dream of. There were many times I lacked basic necessities, a consistent place to live, clean clothes, nourishing food, and a sense of safety. When a young person doesn't have a stable home, it affects everything, school, mental health, relationships, and even the belief that things can get better. But everything started to shift when I moved into the housing provided by the Foster Care Association. For the first time in my life, I felt peace. I felt safe. I had a place that was mine, a place I could finally call home. That stability allowed me to focus on my education, my goals, and more importantly, to believe in myself. Today, I am a college student working hard to become a dental assistant, a career I'm passionate about because I want to help others feel confident and cared for. I'm living proof of what can happen when foster youth are supported, not just in word, but in action. That's why I'm asking for your full investment in this housing initiative. It's not just about buildings. This is about futures. It's about giving determined, capable young adults a real shot at independent success and the opportunity to give back to the community that stood behind them. Your support is not a handout. It's a launchpad. It tells youth like me that we matter, that we are seen, and that our futures are worth investing in. Thank you for your time, your compassion, and your commitment to creating lasting change. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
I'm Linda Gregory. I grew up in Terre-Linda. There still. I'm a Marin resource parent fostering since two thousand and nine, and I'm also a proud adoptive parent of a Nevada, a Nevada infant who came into my home that year, two thousand and nine, and his seventeenth birthday is Sunday, and he's sitting in the back. My two sons and I currently serve as an emergency foster home, available for any infant, child, or teen coming into care during the night, on weekends, or holidays. We love being there for kids in crisis. Tonight, I enthusiastically share how important it is to support a six-unit building in San Rafael for TEA youth, those eighteen to twenty-four years old. As a member of MFCA's Board of Directors since two thousand and ten, I've witnessed our small nonprofit meeting our mission of providing comprehensive resources to support and empower the foster care community. The lack of affordable housing in Marin is a well-known fact. Now imagine being a young person in foster care, getting your first apartment. Remember that? Remember that? I really do, right here in San Rafael. Nobody would rent to me. It's nearly impossible to find a place or a landlord who will rent to you. In a leap of determination and faith, MFCA bought a ten-unit studio apartment building in Nevada two years ago, now home for seven young adults. Working closely with alternative family services, children and family services, and nonprofits like Make It Home, together, together, we are literally breaking the cycle of homelessness that so often follows foster teens into adulthood. Please join us by granting us the full amount requested for San Rafael TEA apartments. Join us in continuing a proven program and together building bright futures for TEA youth. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Riley, and I'm eleven years old. My family has taken care of a lot of foster babies over the years. Our last baby just moved on after being with us for over a year. I've seen how important it is for kids to have a safe place to live and sleep. It makes a big difference for them. But I'm also aware of what happens when foster kids get older and have to leave. It's scary for them. They don't always have somewhere to go, and they still need to help figuring things out, like how to get a job, apply for college, cook, or pay rent. That's why I think this apartment building is a really good idea. It gives foster youths a safe place to live while they're learning how to be on their own, and I think that if we help them now, they'll have a better chance at success later. Please give full funding to make this happen. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Riley.
Hi. My name is Peggy Doleahan. Excuse me. I'm not a resident of San Rafael. I'm a resident of Nevada, but I've been a foster parent for eight years, my daughter and I. Our most recent placement was back in twenty-two, when we were approached to take, I mainly took younger kids through our home, and there was a young man who was six weeks from graduating high school. Excuse me. Riley, you did it to him. So, and I'm a crier, sorry. So anyway, we took him in six weeks, and then he, that was supposed to be the end of it. I moved him to college because he's going to university, and I'm thinking, where's he gonna go at his break or summer? So we're two years in now, and he comes home every break and every summer, but he's a kid that is gonna make it because he's super goal-oriented. Not every one of these kids is gonna go to college, but they still need the support of housing. So I plead with you all, and we thank you for everything you've done for us, for full funding for this, because it's a plan that's working. It's in place. It's not a pipe dream. It's happening faster than any of us ever dreamed of, but it's really providing a critical need for these young people that otherwise would be homeless. So I thank you. Sorry, I'm a tearjerker, a crier, but we really hope that you'll fund it a hundred percent. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. Thanks for having me. My name's Devora, and I've worked here in San Rafael over at Quater Coffees for fourteen years, and I've been lucky enough to call Marin home for the past six years. I'm a foster and adoptive parent. My thirteen-year-old, who I adopted from foster care, goes to public school here in Marin, because yes, there are kids at every school in Marin who are in the foster care. As a transplant, Marin is an amazing place, right? We take good care of our community, and thanks to Marin Foster Care Association and all the resource parents here in the county, we take exceptional care of kids while they're part of the dependency system. We make sure they are not only in safe and loving homes, but that they have the same opportunities that kids who are able to stay with their birth parents do. They go to camps, they participate in sports, and they take part in extracurricular activities. We make sure to do all we do to minimize hardships at a very traumatic time in a child's life. But for young adults who are aging out of a foster system, there are less safeguards and less support. Young adults who age out are statistically more likely to become homeless, to deal with challenges related to addiction, or to become parents' young. They unwillingly and often unknowingly repeat these generational cycles they were born into. And we purchased this apartment building here in San Rafael to break these cycles, to give young people support. Right? I'm sure you all either have children or friends with children who move out at eighteen, and they are calling home for support when they're nineteen, twenty, twenty-five, right? They're bringing home laundry to do when they're coming home from college, like Peggy's young adult. They're looking for their parents to help them fill their pantries or to co-sign that first apartment, right? Kids aging out of foster care don't have those parents to call to co-sign that first apartment. So the apartments that are nonprofit purchase here in San Rafael gives them a safe place to land here in Marin, to keep them in the community they know and love, and keeping them from being displaced allows them to continue to reach the supportive and trusted adults that otherwise would be their parents. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Can you hear me? My name is Molly Goki. I am a foster parent here in Marin County, and this entire project is extremely personal to me because I have a young teenager that is actually moving into the apartments on Park Street. So I will tell a quick story. He, two years ago, came to my house for two weeks. I was helping just take care of him for two weeks, and then I said, no one can have him back. He's staying with us because he is this bit of love that we needed in our household that we didn't know. We kept taking babies, and little did we know, we needed a seventeen-year-old to show us the way. He has been with us. He came to us quiet and introverted, traumatized. He had been through so much in his life and did not speak the same language as myself and my daughter, and we looked different, we sounded different, we lived very different, and we spent the next two years getting to know each other over Uno and our Friday night pizza nights and homework and so many different things that truly just define a family, and that's what we became. We became a super tight, loving family. I consider him my son. I am so proud of him. He just graduated from San Rafael High School. He received the President's Award for Educational Excellence. This is a kid that was told two years ago that he was not on a path to graduate. He's moving into this apartment because he's ready. If it was not for Marin Foster Care's apartment, and I will tell you, this is a true life story, months ago, not knowing if he was gonna get an apartment, I was afraid that he was gonna have to ditch his dreams of going to college, and he was gonna have to move out of county. We fought and fought for him to get a spot in that apartment, and because of Marin Foster Care's apartment and their help and their support and the wraparound support, he will be living there, and he will be able to come over and do his laundry, and he will be able to have Friday night pizza night with us and all of the things that he should be doing because he is my son, and this is the way I'll be able to continue supporting him and help him succeed in his life. I beg of you to please give us full funding for this project.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, I want to open my tongue. My, I'm gonna speak. Can I speak for my daughter? Can I read her speech that she is very scared to say?
It's out of protocol, but yes, you may.
Thank you for letting me do that.
Hi. I'm Waverly. I am ten years old, and Ricardo is my foster brother. Over the last years, I've watched him grow up and try really hard at everything, from school to learning English, cooking, not so good, learning to ride a bike, even just being a good big brother, and not just to me, but to all of our foster babies too. Now that he's finished high school, he wants to live on his own, and I think he's ready. But he needs a safe place to go. These apartments would help him start his grown-up life the right way, and I know he's ready. Please help make this happen. Thank you, Waverly. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am adjusting my speech that I'm going, was planning on giving to you guys. I have appreciated working with your city staff. Alexis and Stacy have been great. We, you know, applied to this project last summer as part of the overall, you know, kind of a expansion of our footprint into Marin County, into San Rafael. We do a lot of development in the Bay Area. We have a transition-age youth project that's finishing up construction that has forty units that is gonna be for transition-age youth housing, and it's a game changer. You know, she, Alexis pointed out very correctly that this is a different project with the city owning the land. We don't have access to the pre-development loans like we do in most projects where we acquire the loan, the property with an acquisition loan combined with a pre-development loan. That's how we've done like ninety percent of our projects, and the land is collateral. If we don't have that, you know, we don't really have the ability to move the project forward. You know, this, this, this project will be kind of moving forward with a streamlined approach with I-Rite approval. You know, if we have a speedy city approval process that isn't overly detailed, sometimes the entitlement process ends up looking like construction drawings, you know, when we're just talking about land use approval, you know. I want to support this project. You know, I want, I want to make sure that these guys can have their, their property paid off. You know, we asked for two hundred thousand dollars. We need six hundred thousand dollars to get to kind of the entitlement phase where we can then go for all the state funding. We can go for state HCD funding. Next year, there may not be much state HCD funding. The year after that, who knows? You know, federal funding, housing authority vouchers, there's a long path, you know. So, you know, I would recommend that you fully fund them and that you give us a hundred thousand dollars now for pre-development and that you consider an additional a hundred thousand dollars at some point in the future as we, as we finish up the entitlements. And I also ask for time. This project is gonna take a while to get funded. I won't, I won't lie to you. You know, the, the funding environment is challenged right now, you know, with Prop Five not passing, with the regional Bay Area Housing For All Bond, BAFSA not passing last fall. It's gonna take a couple of years to reset, to get funding re-enplaced. The state housing bond is gonna be very challenged to get it passed statewide. I know, this is a great site. You know, the transit is there, it's downtown, it's a great location, the city owns it. We will get bonus points for having a city contribute the land, but it's gonna take time. So, you know, our, our money is needed, but it's not needed now. These guys seem like they need it now, so I would, you know, ask that you would fully fund their project and fund us at a hundred thousand dollars at this point.
Thank you for your comments, and I didn't catch your name.
Sorry. John White from Chief Real Estate Officer of Boat Housing Development.
Okay. Thank you, John. Anyone else like to comment on this item? Okay. Not seeing anyone. I'm gonna close the public comment. I don't know if staff, we have a staff recommendation in front of us. I think we heard a lot of incredible, wonderful testimony this evening. I do have a question that might kick us off. I was struck when I was hearing from the resource and foster parents, the incredible work that you do, and that there's a site in Nevada and a site in San Rafael, and San Rafael's being asked to fund, and I don't know if you can answer this, or maybe we can ask folks at Marin Foster Care, but the other jurisdictions, like there are ten other jurisdictions, each of them put in ten grand, you have a hundred thousand right there. So I'm curious about the other jurisdictions because I'm assuming that these, the youth are from all over Marin County and that there's not a, I don't know, requirement from where I, I just, maybe you can answer that because that was the thing, these dollar, this is super precious, and I'm really, I'm so compelled by the testimony I heard, and I want all the chambers, council chambers in Marin County to have this conversation, not just San Rafael, because it's, it's bigger than what we can do here.
Yeah, we have not gone to all of the other jurisdictions, so we've just gone, you know, can talk about what we've done in the past. So we've gone to the city of Nevada for them, and obviously here for San Rafael. I'd say our kids do come from all over Marin. I'd say obviously the city of San Rafael and Nevada are the largest, so we're gonna get a larger population. to get a larger population of foster youth from those cities. I don't have the breakdown, but that's partly why. And so we've never considered going to other jurisdictions to ask for that. I think it would be a harder ask, just knowing kind of where some are located, like going to Marin City and Sausalito versus ones that are closer, but.
Maybe, and, I mean, you're very compelling what you are doing in our community to support transition-age youth. And it's one of those issues that all the cities should be representing in one, I mean, that's really one of my takeaways. And it's not even having to do, it's because the pie we have here is so small. So as you were talking, I'm like, how do we make the pie bigger? And all the different funding sources. And to me, there's been a, that is missing so far from your funding strategy, and you named Sausalito, but we have San Antonio, we have Fairfax, we have other jurisdictions here, we have Corte Madera, we have Larkshire.
Sure.
And again, is we all putting into the pie? I mean, really, that's what I'm trying to think about because it's about this moment, but it's really about your funding structure going forward. Because, I mean, trust me, I think all of us up here understand the importance of the work that you're doing.
Yeah, and I would just point out one example. As one of our youth who's living in Nevada in a different apartment building is commuting two hours between work and College of Marin, each, two hours each way. So he's now moving to our San Rafael building next week and is now able to literally walk to work. And so that's kind of the solutions we're able to have, and his quality of life is going to be transformed because he's going to now live in the city that he works and goes to school in, right?
Yeah. Mayor Kate? Yes, thank you, thank you.
If I may?
Yes.
I would be happy to have a conversation with my colleagues at the other cities and towns, try to encourage them to consider making some contributions. I think that's incredibly appropriate, and I would hope they would be compelled to support this incredible work.
Yeah, we can talk to the MCC MC president who's sitting here, and maybe we can have a, well, no, we could have a presentation because again, these are the types of, I mean, in this population, how do we have support as a community? I mean, I just, I feel really strongly about, you know, what I heard tonight. And again, I mean, without that money tree, we're always parsing out the dollars. So that's what I'm trying to figure out is how do we make it more robust? Just seems like a no-brainer. I would like staff to comment on, we had very unusual testimony from John this evening about his take on the current staff report. So I didn't know if staff wanted to convene for a moment and then talk to us or go ahead and react to the testimony that we heard.
I'll take a first stab at that, and I think it would be helpful if staff could confer on how, you know, giving the council some options and how to respond. If we could take like two minutes, I do want to just make a comment and appreciate and recognize John for his generosity and real-time heartfelt consideration of partnering and supporting this organization. It's in my 25 years of public service, I don't know that I've ever seen that sort of gesture. And I was saying to the city attorney that we really need good humans like yourself. I'm a crier too, it's okay to cry, to do really great things. So I just wanted to really recognize and appreciate that.
Okay, so we'll let them confer for two minutes. You can play Wordle or do something, so give them a moment. Mayor Kate?
Yes.
Staff is ready to return. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
And thank you for your patience. No, this is important that we take the time, yes, for all ears.
Thank you. We'd like to present two options for the council to consider. The first option would be what John White proposed, which would be to reduce the current funding award recommendation for abode housing to 100,000 and increase the Marin Foster Care Association Award to 250,000. The other option would be, so when we brought forward the initial funding amount to the council back in December, we recommended 500,000 based on the funds that were available and also the need to fund the below-market rate program. So we always keep a certain amount of funds for that program, and that is still the case. However, we recently received an infusion of dollars from a four-unit townhome project that increased the amount of funds in the fund a little bit, a little bit. And so one other proposal that the council could consider would be to award both, to keep the abode housing project at the current award level, but to also raise the Marin Foster Care Association Award level to 250,000. This would reduce the level of reserves available for the below-market rate program. However, we still have enough for the coming year. So we just wanted to present that because we received a little bit of additional dollars that were not anticipated when we originally recommended the 500,000. We don't always know when those dollars are going to come in because, as you know, projects, we don't always know when they're going to pull a building permit.
Just a brief clarification. Alexis mentioned the 500,000. That was the staff recommendation for the totality of the allocation for this, for this round. So, and that, I just want to reiterate that, that the timing, as Alexis said, is the infusions of INLU dollars, it was INLU dollars, correct? That are coming into that fund are really unpredictable. So in this case, with staff were conferring about offering the option to increase the allocation and to pull another 100,000 from that fund, it's really in consideration of that new revenue source coming into the fund in a timely manner. It's not something that we could, you know, we could always do in real time, but I think given that circumstance, staff's comfortable offering that as an option to the council.
Fantastic, we appreciate that. Additional questions, Vice Mayor?
Questions? We noticed 500,000. How can we possibly unilaterally at the last minute increase it to 600,000? And do we want to set this precedent?
Thank you for the question. So then the NOFA language does provide the council with some flexibility to provide less than the amount advertised or more than the amount advertised. And we did do that in 2023. We provided an additional 50,000 over the amount that was advertised. So it is an option that you have within your, you know, purview if you so choose.
Can I offer a comment to?
Yes, city attorney.
With regard to the latter part of your question, which is, I do think, having participated in the conversation with staff, that this recommendation tonight, which I agree is a unique, is a response to the unique presentation that you heard here tonight. I've been doing this for a long time, and I share Christine's observation. I've not seen a city council agenda item like this before. And I think we were all really struck by Mr. White's comments, and we're trying to think of a way to honor both that and the rather extraordinary presentation that preceded it. So, but ultimately, you four get to decide what to do next.
Thank you. Additional, do you have any questions before we get to comments? Clarifications that are needed? Nope? Okay, we'll start with comments. Vice Mayor?
Well, there are two, two options. The first one recognizes the astonishing generosity. I'm concerned about sending out a notice and then, you know, changing the amount, but if we have that authority, although, aren't we setting the stage for everyone to say the next time?
Can I check that again? I don't think on the noticing issue that it would change anything about what the applications were in the first instance. I mean, these folks came in with their applications, with the funding needs that they had, and based on my understanding of how it works, I don't think they were trying to titrate that to whether it was 500,000 or 600,000. And again, I personally view tonight's meeting as unique in my experience, I think now having gone to 1,000 public meetings. So I don't share respectfully the concern about this being a precedent because I see it as such an unusual evening, but I understand your point. So I think that's something you can deliberate.
Well, one more question. If we were to go with option one, is there an anticipation of another NOFA coming along soon?
So the county of Marin typically issues a NOFA every January. If we have the funding available in our trust fund, we could participate in that NOFA in January. So, but it is, you know, dependent on the amount of funding we have available, obviously.
So we could leave that 100,000 there and then address the, distribute it to the most generous person we've ever seen in the next round?
Yes, you could do that, yes.
We could do that, but we're on equally solid legal ground to do this. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, additional comments? Councilmember Kurtz?
I guess I would support the option two because I was going to say fund, figure out how we can fund fully the park property and, and you did already figure that out. So you found that additional 100,000 because I think it's really important to be able to do that. Thank you for your, you know, your comments and your insight, and I'd be curious about your table building that you have, wherever that is. So I think that we have an option on the table, and I'm happy to move forward with that recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
I concur. I would like to move forward with option two. Every one of these applications is worthy, and I think that for transition-age youth there is urgency in this matter. And, and yet, I think I would also recognize that this is a, this gesture is a drop in the bucket. We need much more in our society. And to John White, your generosity is, it's moving. So I would like to move forward with option two and fund to the recommendation that was afforded to abode.
Thank you. I concur with the city attorney that tonight was very unusual, and to me, it's the epitome of how does community come together to address and support all the variety of populations in our community? And the fortuitous timing will just say, thank you, the world, who brought that forward. This is a population, as you've already heard me say, that I want all the council chambers to be talking about. We see you, we know that Nevada sees you, right? We want everybody, all the chambers, to see you and to see the great work you're doing and these incredible human beings who are coming over many adversities and excelling in school and life and the next step. And it's incredible. So to play a very small part, because we don't have that money tree in that growth and in that support, is an honor, I think, for all of us that are up here. And I really appreciate staff for hearing, the community, hearing from the council, hearing from Mr. White, and coming up with option two, which I fully supported, is unusual. This is an issue initiated that we first met back many, many, many months ago. So it is highly unusual, and I'm not as concerned about a precedent. And if it comes before it, I know the council, who's ever sitting there, if it's us or someone else, will also show up in the right way at that moment. So thank you to staff, thank you to all of you who came out and shared your highly personal stories and for being vulnerable in a public forum. We know how difficult that can be. So I have heard a motion for option two, and I'm going to ask the city attorney how we need...
I think it's simply to adopt the staff recommendation, but to increase the award to the youth by 100,000.
Could I just read it and just change the numbers?
Yeah.
We can. And Madam City Clerk, this is a really long resolution that you have a council member reading. I'm just putting that out there.
I agree.
Okay. Councilmember Hill?
Okay.
How about it?
I move that we adopt the resolution authorizing the appropriation of 603,000 from the Affordable Housing INLU Fee Fund, Fund Number 243, including $3,000 in administrative costs for funding for three 100% affordable housing projects in fulfillment of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund 2025 Notice of Funding Availability and authorizing the city manager to execute funding agreements with abode housing development in an amount not to exceed 200,000, Marin Foster Care Association in an amount not to exceed 250,000, NEAH Housing in an amount not to exceed 150,000, and all documents incidental to the funding agreements.
Second? Well done. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Mayor Kate? Aye, that motion carries 4-0. Before we adjourn, we have open time for public expression, and I will be adjourning tonight in honor of Bill Bagley, so I'll say a few comments about him. But first, let's have open time for public expression. This is anything not on tonight's topic.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Dewitt. I'm a 40-plus-year resident of the West End neighborhood. I have submitted into the record a petition with the names of 103 people who oppose the closure of the left turn lane from Second Street to Marquard and West End avenues proposed as part of the Second and Fourth Street intersection improvement project. This intersection is not one of 35 high collision intersections, nor is it included in This intersection is not one of 35 high collision intersections, nor is it included in 20 high collision road segments identified in the San Rafael Local Road Safety Plan adopted in 2024. There's no history of collisions involving this left turn lane, which has broad visibility, but there was a serious bicycle accident on West End Avenue where 200 additional vehicles will be rerouted daily, including delivery trucks and construction equipment to share the road with bicyclists who do not have a dedicated bike path on West End Avenue. The other 100 vehicles will be rerouted from a signalized intersection to an unsignalized intersection, crossing the bike path and pedestrian crosswalk from a left turn lane without a signal. It's been more than two months since residents' concerns about safety and access issues caused by the proposed closure of this left turn lane were voiced at a city council meeting. I have sent emails and received no response from Public Works regarding the issues raised at this hearing. I've received no response from requests to meet with the city traffic engineer and have been told that the public cannot attend traffic committee meetings. We would like a response to all issues raised at the April 21 city council meeting and would like to meet with the traffic engineer. We encourage you to support our petition and keep the left turn lane open for the 300 plus vehicles that use it on a daily basis. Thank you.
Sir, anyone else that would like to speak during this open time? Okay, not seen anyone. I'll close with public comment. Tonight, I want to adjourn this meeting in honor of William "Bill" Bagley, a longtime public servant, state legislator, and proud son of Marin. I had the honor of meeting Bill over a decade ago and I'm grateful to have learned from him. He believed deeply in government as a force for good. He worked across party lines to pass meaningful legislation, including state landmark laws that brought greater transparency to public decision-making. He was a founder, beginning of the Brown Act. His legacy reminds us that public service isn't about partisanship. It's about doing what's right for the people you represent. May his example continue to inspire us all. This meeting is adjourned.